All right, you guys want to go on or do we keep on doing what we're supposed to count when we head us? All right, motion to go back in the session. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Are you know, there is a quorum available. May we continue our quorum? Okay, Madam President, next public hearing.
The next public hearing is a proposal against to amend the local ordinance to establish a medical marijuana over Lake District in the city of Lynn.
Unlike the other, um, public hearings we had, we're not gonna do a support and oppose. We're just gonna do a general discussion. So if any folks wanna come up and just make statements, um, and suggestions, um, and testimony, please do so in no particular order. Just remember to state your name and your address for the record.
I'm Lisa Wallace on 12th National Street, Ward, Ward 6. I'm against, uh, both of those sites being in my neighborhood. You guys have a very policy that puts businesses away from residential neighborhoods and, uh, sites that are chosen that are very close to our neighborhoods. I'm a recovering addict for 15 years. I worked in work for a while. I understand that we have a war on opiates and yes, it's a medical option to take that way. Where you're putting it in Ward 6 is almost setting it up to fail. Our ward is not stable enough to handle that. And from one of the hearing, the funding that comes with this doesn't designate any kind of community policing right where these are going to go. So now we're gonna have two marijuana clinics in the vicinity of the Linway and the neighborhood where we already have methadone clinics and a lot of issues anyway. And we have community policing over in Woodby. So it would serve no purpose. If we have to have two sites and we have to say, okay, one of them will own Ward 6, I would want it to be on the Blossom Street corridor with around no neighborhoods around there or on the other side of the Linway where it's not close to any of our neighborhoods. I have kids, like I said, I'm a, I'm a recovering addict. I have a different perspective on drugs. I am alcohol free, I'm drug free. I just have a different way of looking at it. And all of you know me, you know that I work very closely with cleaning up our neighborhood. And I just kinda feel like Ward 6 is like not getting much help and support. The policy doesn't please with these clinics out and out, doesn't help us at all either. If it's gonna come here, you guys have to start thinking about our area. It's not looking at the impact of putting these type of things here. Because right now, we have no policing. I lost my community liaison. I have drug deals up in downtown street. You're looking at these clinics in a very general way. Don't make me mistake this place like, okay, they're very nicely priced. Oh, look at the shrubs. Oh, look, there's a gate there or a glass or a metal detector. What I'm looking at as you're putting a place like this in a low income neighborhood where people have to decide, do I feed my children this week or do I sell my prescription? I know they're gonna do it anyway, but if you're giving them access to things like this in a general area where we already deal with some of the aspects from methadone clinics and just in general, our areas' issues, I just kinda feel like every time we do something to build up our area and our community, it just gets smacked down. If they have to come here, put them in a more stable place and a more stable community that can hold it. Our neighborhood is not that. So if in fact it has to go one in Ward 6, please put it on the Blossom National Street corridor or on the other side of the Linway. We don't have to deal with worrying about it being near our churches, our schools, this and that. If it does have to come here, whatever ward these go to, have one in Ward 6. Another counselor, look at a location in your place where you guys know you have a better stable area. Put it in there, share the community money, put policing in your area, whatever ward it goes in, take some of that funding and make it so that it benefits that ward. One goes in Ward 6, if it has to, I really urge you, please don't do this. If you want these things to succeed and be beneficial, don't set it up to fail by putting it in a place that already has so much stuff against it. We're in another ward. But if it has to come, please just look at the money and think about us just a second on what it's gonna do. I'm very tired of constantly having to go, Peter, please, I need police, well, to help me handle that. Peter, please, this is this and, you know, we, I'm just trying to think about the other. So I just urge you, if one has to go in Ward 6, please choose the location away from neighborhoods. And if we have to have two locations, please choose another ward that has a more stable location and share the community money to go specifically to that ward so that we don't have to worry, is this gonna be the one that's my neighborhood, my school, my this, my that? That's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Hello, my name is, uh, testified. Anyone else who should just make general statements, testify, suggestions?
Hi, my name is Edward Nunes. I'm on 102 South Street. I'm also against this. I feel we were never notified, the street was never notified. This is the first time I hear about it or heard about it, maybe a day ago. I'm totally against it. I got kids growing up on my street too. They're, you know, they don't wanna grow up in that kinda environment either. I moved out to the city of Chelsea nine years ago to move to Lynn. And I feel that my street, I'm trying to like have it cleaned up. You know, have it nice for kids all the time, the streets, I try to keep it clean. And I wanna try to keep the whole area clean and where the community where I live clean. I understand we don't have a lot of odors in our area, but I'm sure that's gonna grow. I guarantee it's gonna grow. I'm totally against this, 100 percent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very enjoy my work, seven hundred streetman. I represent client NSAJO Holdings Inc. Who has a leasehold property on Blossom Street Extension. We just reached the council to reconsider description of the over Lake District from that location. Which is on the opposite side of the Linway. We feel that by not including other property of the Linway, maybe the question squats over. Thank you.
Your attorney, my host.
Hello, good evening. Uh, my name is Daniel Blue Sven. I'm an attorney at Principal Beltai in Boston. Together with attorney, my host, we represent NSAJO Holdings. Just wanted to add a little bit extra. We feel we've put together a fantastic team. Our client is a superior operator and we've also assigned on the former chief of police, superintendent chief of police for the city of Boston, Dan Linsky, to manage our security operations. Just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who should make a statement, testify, offer testimony, suggestions? Mr. Zeller?
Mr. Caden, I'm with the council. My name is David Zeller. I'm in Insurance, uh, 37 Wallin Road, Swansburg, Massachusetts. And I'm a, uh, insurance broker on the Linway at, uh, 370 Linway. And I own the property at 364 to 370 Linway and 200 to 226 Blossom Street Extension, which is the corner lot, uh, Blossom Street Extension where Duncan Dones is. I might want to say what a difference a week makes. My presentation comments are dramatically changed from the way I wrote them last week. And I want to applaud especially the council president in correcting most of the ills of the past. But I feel, feel compelled to point out a number of issues that would show that the southbound side of the Linway is totally inappropriate and that the northbound side of the Linway at 216 to 218 Blossom Street Extension is much more appropriate. On the public hearing that was proposed tonight and the properties on the Linway, the eight properties that were mentioned on the Linway, they are all abutting residential neighborhoods. There was absolutely no one, I can say with certainty, that wants a marijuana dispensary in their backyard. Even if you owned an abutting piece of property, they still would not want a marijuana dispensary in their own backyard. The initial planning board did not have any specific criteria for the selection of those locations other than they did not want it on the waterside of the Linway for fear that it would impact waterfront development plan, even though the plan has languished for more than five years without anything of major significance developing. It is easy to infer from statements at a recent political forum that these actions were arbitrary and capricious and then it is complete and that, period. That, I just wanna say that those actions that were put forth, none of the council members participated in it. And the fact that the council has now taken a position to have the public hearing, perhaps even extend it to do additional vetting and maybe do RFPs for the particular applicants just shows that many, uh, many of the counselors had great ideas. And had they been involved from the start, we probably wouldn't be having this public hearing. Even more amazing to me is the total lack of their knowledge and understanding about the uses and needs of patients requiring medical marijuana. Case in point, one person in the public forum commented that it should be next to the methadone clinic because they have both the same, implying that methadone and marijuana patients are the same type and both drug addicts. Okay, so anybody that is familiar with medical marijuana realizes that it is not an addictive substance, it is not an opiate, it's a natural herb. And I'd be willing to stand corrected, but there's never been a case of an overdose, a fatal overdose from smoking marijuana. In professional circles and discussions, the actual word marijuana is almost never used because of its pejorative connotations and instead is replaced by the word cannabis. The most amazing thing about all of this late selection process was that the local ward counselor was not even invited to participate. Fortunately, the Rules and Ordinance Committee and the president have rectified that situation. And now all the counselors will be involved in the process. Five of the locations that were submitted to you are currently active and vibrant businesses operating. So where would the dispensary go? There are only three vacant lots and of those, only one has minimally enough parking. If ever there was a textbook example of spot zoning, which is illegal, this is it and in a follow-up consequence, that almost certainly the probability of an expensive legal challenge would ensue. Most of the locations have limited parking and when in full operation, it's estimated that some of the better operated medical dispensaries will have as many as 300 patients daily. All of the locations are within walking distance from several schools. The Lynn Vocational Tech is a couple blocks away. St. Mary's High School is a couple blocks away, as well as some of the church schools. Even as recently as last week, the superintendent of Lynn Schools came out on the front page of the Lynn Item saying that she was totally against marijuana altogether. So having a dispensary within walking distance to the schoolchildren would certainly be a public insult to her wishes. The marijuana dispensary is going to be staffed with medical doctors. I repeat, medical doctors, not retail clerks. Can you imagine how insulting it is to relegate a medical professional to a less than attractive semi-industrial location for their practice? Actually, there's even a medical dispensary in downtown Boston at the corner of Milton School Street. Location, location, location. These are the three words that every successful businessperson understands. Unfortunately, Lynn City Hall didn't seem to realize this when they made the proposal. When this facility becomes fully operational, it will be the highest, if not, one of the highest, if not the highest grossing facility in all of Lynn, proportionally speaking per square foot. If you are going to have a premier business in your town, you ought to have the foresight and initiative to give it one of your best locations. Let the businessperson decide where it should go, not the politicians. And I don't consider the city council as politicians because most of you are individual businessmen. As I understand it, medical marijuana dispensaries will not have an additional city tax applied to their profits. There's some question about that. I know that when recreational marijuana facilities start, they will and there's a question about how to spend the linkage money. But the linkage for the dispensaries, uh, I may be, I might have misinformation, but I'm not sure. That was my understanding. It's also my understanding that when marijuana is legalized for recreational use, those dispensaries will be given the first opportunity to operate those new retail establishments. And at that time, those establishments will subject, be subject to some sort of community linkage or local tax, which could eventually generate millions, literally millions of dollars for city programs. Do not allow the city to kill the golden goose and squander the unique opportunity they have done so many times before. Having 216, 218 Blossom Street Extension, also known as the Harbor Mall of Duncan Dones Plaza, added to the list of properties designated as an approved site for medical marijuana dispensary is an obvious choice and I am asking you to support its merits. Most importantly and all, its single, its single most important advantage is that it is not near nor does it abut any residential addresses or properties. It is on the northbound side of the Linway and for geographic purposes, it allows the Linway to serve as a practical obstacle and natural barrier to pedestrian traffic from the schools and the schoolchildren from the other side of the Linway, thus dissuading students from casually marking over or visiting the facility. It is the most valuable piece of real estate on the entire Linway relative to its transportation accessibility. It has an MBTA bus stop right in front of Duncan Dones that goes directly from Wonderland to downtown Lynn. It is the home base of Union Taxi, now one of the largest and most preeminent taxi services in the city. It is easily accessible to the, it was, it would be easily accessible to the now defunct Lynn Water Ferry to Boston. And God willing, with the funding for the ferry, it will again be accessible in the future. There is a coalition, uh, nonprofit coalition in Massachusetts dedicated to the accessibility of medical marijuana. And they said that perhaps this might even be a boon because you would be able to have the taxi, the ferry service well, uh, well, well-appointed from people who are coming into Lynn rather than just workers leaving Lynn. It is also within walking distance of the commuter rail. All the existing businesses in the facility, in the mall are okay with having a medical marijuana dispensary as a patient, adjacent tenant. It is already zoned as an established mixed-use retail and office location and it has plenty of parking. It is currently on the high interest list of at least several dispensary enterprises. Lynn wants and needs to fund a water ferry again. And I submit to you, and me, just those of funding for the ferry may at some time in the future come from the taxes generated from the expansion of the facility encompassing recreational and medical outlets. The Massachusetts Patient Advocacy Alliance says that one of the major hurdles to patients in need of medical marijuana is accessibility. By selecting a location with all of the above accessible options, it would make 216, 218 Blossom Street Extension one of the premier locations in all of Massachusetts. It is, in all probability, it would in fact probably become a destination location and over time would provide the single largest source of ridership on the ferry. Through tax linkage and community contributions, it could also provide major operational funding. Taking an opportunity to participate in the war on opiate abuse, I rented out a suite of medical offices to doctors who provide counseling and valuation to individuals who have opiate addiction problems. No drugs on the premises and no drugs are being administered. I'm trying to transform my building into an outpatient medical center. There are several other medical providers that are also interested in locating in a facility with these type of tenants in order to capitalize on the professional synergy. A medical cannabis dispensary would be a perfect complement to the addictive counseling facility. I apologize for not having sufficient notice to invite Senator Elizabeth Warren, who you may want to reach out to as a guest speaker. Who, uh, apologize for not having enough time to invite Senator Elizabeth Warren to be a guest speaker at this public hearing tonight. Senator Elizabeth Warren, on February 8th, 2016, wrote to Dr. Freedman, head of the CDC, asking the agency to explore every opportunity and tool available to collaborate with other federal health agencies to investigate how medical marijuana is or isn't working to reduce the reliance on highly addictive prescription pills and to research, quote, "the impact of the legislation of medical and recreational marijuana on opiate overdose deaths." If trying to help people kick the opiate habit is good enough for the Senator Warren, then I consider it an implied endorsement of my efforts. Cannabis is not an opiate, it is a natural herb. Cannabis is not habit-forming. Most patients who take cannabis take it for pain relief. I have a substantial knowledge about cannabis and the business of cannabis, medical and, both medical and recreational. And I admit that I have smoked it, but I did not inhale. And I would be involved in behalf of the city if so asked. Finally, I have an extensive network of resources, including published authors and nonprofit advocacy groups who are willing to help the city council provide as much extra information as you need to make any informed decisions. Imagine people actually wanting to come to Lynn on a ferry for the initial purpose of getting medical treatment at the adjacent locations of 216, 218 Blossom Street Extension and then enjoying all the other beautiful amenities that Lynn has to offer. No one, uh, with your help, let's make Lynn great again. Sincerely, David Zeller.
Thank you, Lisa. Anyone else who should make a statement? I'm sorry.
Quite the same idea, Jim.
Lisa Wallace, you do not deserve this.
Thank you. I just wanna say, I worked drug court many years, I'm a recovering addict. I don't want this to get turned into, oh, we're gonna kill the opiate war by providing medical marijuana. The drug is a drug, it's a drug. Start one drug by offering another drug. I'm not gonna get into that. I'm just urging the council to not look at this like we're gonna start a hillhopper by serving weed. And I don't think the look for Lynn is come to Lynn and get high, let's all get high, like that. No, we're not gonna go there. That's not what we're gonna have Lynn look at. No, no. So I'm urging you, please, don't allow that argument that it's not a drug, it's not addictive. It is addictive. My brother is now a gateway drug. My brother's gone off the drugs, stopped smoking weed, he's back on heroin again. I have statistics, I'm gonna drug court, I had to pass them into the state. Weed's, it's a gateway drug. Using it for medical purposes and saying that there's medical doctors there, it doesn't make it any more appealing. There are medical doctors at the hospital who give out opiates. So no, we're not, we're not gonna have this discussion like that. I'm just saying, please, don't look at this as a money-making thing. Think of, let's be a building lineup. Let's not look at money and go, oh, it's gonna be profitable. I don't really feel like that's a good look. We're profiting off of drugs. I know it's gonna be legal, I'm not about it, I'm not for it. I'm not for liquor stores, I'm not for cigarettes, I'm not branded that. So please, just don't, let's not go with that.
Anyone else who should speak? Anyone else who should speak? Anyone wishing to speak, saying no else wishing to speak? I believe I will entertain a motion to continue the hearing. Counselors here.
Uh, I would like to make a motion to continue the hearing. There is still a lot of facts that I think the council should become aware of. We get, you know, the school plans should be, uh, I understand why it was put together the way it was, that we had to do something. And I agree with the speakers who came up here tonight. Whatever decision we make, it's matter of fact, our city, for many years to come. So I would like to make a motion to continue.
Second, second. Motion to continue the hearing to May 24th, which is our next regularly scheduled meeting. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Are you know, the item is held, the matter is continued.
But, I believe Council Lozic has a motion.
Council Lozic, yes.
I would like to take off the table.
Would you like me to re-?
Would you give your favor, correct, first?
Petition at Chestnut Realty Trust, Cash Not Row. Permission for a two-story addition with 10 residential units above existing stores, residential use in a business district at 522 538 Chestnut Street. And Lozic, we have received a letter of withdrawal for that petition.
Do a motion to take off the table, second. All those in favor say aye. The item is held, the matter is continued.
I would like to make a motion to accept the, the letter of withdrawal.
Motion seconded. All those in favor say aye. The item is held, the matter is accepted. With committee reports.
Committee reports. First committee report is the Public Propagated Parks Commission. And it was motion made to authorize the law to rehabilitize the arid area sale rather than lease a vacant land on Neptune Boulevard.
Council Matt.
It was voted out by the committee to accept the motion to approve.
Motion made to approve, second. All those in favor say aye. The item is held.
Uh, the Admark Committee for the relocating of holding places, there was a recommendation that Ward 4 precincts 1 and 2 be relocated to Kip Academy and 9 Hyron Street, Lynn.
Councilor Hump, Matt.
The order to approve.
Motion made to approve, second. All those in favor say aye. The item is held. Counselor Seager, who's a very loud yes.
No. Still passionate.
No, wait, you're gonna vote for this one. Okay, and the next one.
Raise a page. We have, uh, four transfers, uh, we'll read them all together.
Any injection or re-injection transfers together, so you can do this one.
Order that the city controller take the following actions. Certified as available fund the amount of $239,000.00 allotted to the city Lynn Office of Economic Development by National Workforce and Government Force for Youth Works Summer 2016 Jobs. Certified as available fund the amount of $50,000.00 allotted to the city of Lynn Department of Public Workforce and General Affairs Foundation for Bulky Islands Dumpster Days coordinated by the Savannah Transfer Station. Certified as an available fund the amount of $9,992.00 allotted to the city of Lynn Police Department by the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security for the fiscal year 16, underage alcohol enforcement grant and transfer the, from the reserve fund to the settlement expense account, $20,000.
Counselor Matt, doing a lot of work tonight.
I like it. It was brought around by committee to accept. I'd like a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, roll call.
Councillor Button?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Caden?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Chakoudis? Yes. Yes, Councillor Calucci? Yes. Yes, Councillor Seer? Yes. Yes, Councillor LaPierre?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Matt?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Walsh? Yes. Eleven, yes. Councillor Lozey?
Motion on the emergency, Councillor Matt, second. Councillor Seer, roll call.
Councillor Button?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Caden?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Chakoudis?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Seer? Yes, Councillor LaPierre?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Matt?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Eleven, yes. And Boyd, Vincent, Rose Committee, they just had discussion.
Councillor Seer? Continue the discussion. Second, Madam Page, do we have anything from the Planning Board?
The Planning Board did send down a letter that they have on the gas to the medical marijuana. There was a motion made by David Anthony, seconded by James Mahoney, table the action of a man in the city of Lynn zone who admits to establish a medical marijuana overlay district in the city of Lynn.
Motion to accept the report, second. All those papers say aye. All those who know, the item is had. Any new business?
What do you want to adjourn?
Councillor LaPierre, Councillor Capano?
Councillor Button, we have a resolution that I'd like to introduce with Brian LaPierre, Councillor LaPierre and others supporting Verizon workers that are all on strike.
How do you read that?
Could you read it, please?
Whereas it has come to the attention of the Lynn City Council that approximately 36,000 Verizon workers in the company's landline, the Fios Division, are currently on strike. And whereas Verizon forced the workers on strike by demanding that they allow increased offshoring and contracting out of good jobs from communities, even after Verizon has already sent thousands of formerly good union jobs overseas. And whereas Verizon workers fight for good families supporting jobs. And whereas residents and businesses deserve high-quality telecommunications services, state-of-the-art fixed broadband services, not a network that Verizon chooses to neglect, especially in an emergency, by a low-skill, poorly motivated replacement workforce. And whereas Verizon has made $39 million in profit over the past three years and paid its top five executives more than $230 million over the past five years. And be it therefore resolved that the city of Lynn will not enter into any new contracts or obligations to purchase Verizon products or services while the strike continues. And be it therefore resolved that the city of Lynn will review any current contracts or obligations to purchase Verizon products, or services, and any contracts or obligations where permissible by the terms of the contract and the parties' obligations to one another. And be it therefore resolved that the city of Lynn urges Verizon CEO Lowell McGowan to end the Verizon campaign to destroy good jobs. And be it therefore resolved that the city of Lynn will go on record in support of the striking Verizon workers. Finally, be it therefore resolved that the city of Lynn finds good jobs and good telecommunications services that are vital to the local communities and supports striking Verizon workers in the fight for good jobs that benefit every worker and their families in our community.
Councillor Button?
Yes, there's 38,000 Verizon workers on strike right now. And I think we should do everything we can. We have workers that live in Lynn, live on the North Shore, they're a part of us. I think we should support them on the pipeline. They're showing a lot of courage, standing up to this big corporation. $39 billion, $39 billion, where the CEOs get paid bazillion, bazillion dollars and the workers just keep getting cuts and benefits. A cut, pensions are eliminated, like all these other corporations, cutting benefits and wages, offshoring jobs. And they're taking a stand and I think we should be backing them up in support of good jobs with good wages and benefits. So I want to make a motion in grand second. To approve this resolution. And I hope colleagues do the same.
Thank you, Councillor. Motion made by Councillor Capano, second. By Councillor LaPierre.
I just had another point of discussion. I was on the line with them this morning, out front here. And one of the workers on strike expressed to me that the corporate greed of Verizon bosses have since just stripped the family from health insurance as of Saturday, April 30th. So not only are they on the lines fighting for their careers and livelihoods, but they were also stripped from their benefit while they were on the lines and their family medical insurance. So as of now, while they take to the streets daily, seven days a week, you know, they are without protection for their families in terms of health insurance. And as Councillor Capano said, you know, the give-backs at the table are ridiculous in light of $18 billion industry that the managers and the profits, corporate greed, have made over the past year. So I echo and really want to thank my council colleagues for bringing this forth and passing this. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Councillor Button?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Caden?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Chakoudis?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor LaPierre?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Matt?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Walsh? Yes. Eleven, yes.
Any other business? Councillor Calucci?
Sure.
Motion made to adjourn, second. All those papers have, all those who know, the item is had, your return.